And now.
Welcome, and we're calling to order the April eighth, twenty twenty five work session and regular meeting of the Albemarle County Planning Commission. That, Madam Clerk, would you call the role?
Yes, Mr. Bibens.
Here.
Mr. Carazana.
Here.
Mr. Claiborne.
Here.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
I have Ms. Firehawk and Mr. Missile are both out of town today.
Yes, but we do have a quorum. I also understand that we have Commissioner Murray online and he would like to be admitted remotely.
There we go.
Hello.
Hello.
Commissioner Murray, can you hear us?
I can't, indeed.
Can you tell us your location and your reason for being remote today?
My location is home and it's because a tree is about to fall and block my driveway, so.
And, and home is?
Oh, yeah. Um, in, in, um, in Whitehall.
Where the heart is.
Okay.
No, I'm in Sun Valley. Yeah, you know, I'm at my other house in Sun Valley and I'm just calling it because.
Well, now, do you want to vote to let him in?
Chair, I would move that we allow Commissioner Murray to join our meeting remotely.
Second.
Who seconded?
Mr. Moore.
Second was Mr. Moore.
Okay, all right. Mr. Bibens.
Yes.
Mr. Carazana.
Hi.
Mr. Claiborne.
Hi.
Mr. Moore.
Hi.
Thank you very much.
All right, welcome. And now we, um, we're opening up with our, our work session CCP twenty twenty one zero 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 two AC forty four comp plan, Plan Housing Chapter.
There we go. Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Tori Kanelopoulos. I'm a principal planner on the long range planning team, also joined today by Dr. Stacy Pathia, Assistant Director of Housing. So we'll be talking about the housing chapter today and we'll be sharing a few of the slides in this presentation. So we'll start with a summary of previous planning commission feedback on this topic, review the community input themes that we heard through community engagement, share a brief overview of the chapter and how it overlaps with housing Albemarle, look at the upcoming schedule for the comp plan, um, and then have a few focus topics for the commission to discuss. So I'll start with a quick overview of those and then return to them at the end of the presentation. We have two focus topic questions for the commission, so we're also happy to have feedback on the objectives and the actions, but wanted to include these questions, given the significant overlap with land use and the need to focus on that topic, and then also some recent development applications that have come in. And these, um, questions could help guide updates to the chapter, um, to provide more guidance for future projects. So the first question, uh, related to land use is along with activity centers and mixed use areas, what factors should we use to analyze other locations to allow more housing when we do future area plan updates? So thinking about what type of guidance we could put in the comp plan to help guide, um, the future development area plan updates, such as Southern and Western and Places twenty nine and the other area plans, um, when we do future land use map updates. And then the second one, given recent development applications, what factors should we consider for reviewing affordable housing proposals that are outside of the development areas, such as, um, some of the manufactured home park, uh, requests that we've seen come in? Is there other guidance that we should have in the comp plan update to help guide review of those types of applications? So a summary of previous planning commission feedback on this topic, um, from phase two, the comment to have more strategies to encourage missing middle housing in the comp plan, encouraging housing and activity centers and employment districts, and then having partnerships to support aging in the community, which overlaps with other chapters like transportation. The commission also highlighted the need to preserve existing units and help people remain in their homes, that we should look at options for implementation that could include community land trusts, housing trust fund, regional collaboration and using county owned land, and then highlighting the overlap with other chapters, which I will talk a little bit more about. So from community input, we've heard the strong need for a variety of housing types at a variety of price points that includes, uh, housing for smaller household sizes, first time home buyers and aging community members, a need for more multifamily housing, and looking at housing affordability in the rural area, which is mainly focused on maintaining existing units. We've also heard from some community members interested in other types of small scale housing. And then coordinated planning for housing, land use, transportation, economic development and parks and rec, and looking at the overlap with walkability and housing. Also heard about the importance to maintain existing homes and support aging in place, including one story homes and smaller units, the need for more assisted living facilities, ideally in walkable places, and then weatherization, energy efficiency and home repair programs. For energy efficiency, we've also heard, um, interest in requirements and incentives and housing location and proximity to daily destinations and how the overlap with transportation is key for climate change related to housing. So looking at the goal for this chapter, wanted to note the overlap with the AC forty four framework and how it overlaps with all four of those sections, including, um, the overlap with the chapters, as I mentioned, like transportation, parks and economic development, and then noting that the goal talks about housing as a foundational community need. There are seven objectives. I won't read through all of them, but a lot of them are focused on land use and increasing the overall housing supply, also preserving and maintaining aging housing that we already have, addressing energy cost burdens and addressing unmet needs for people that are unsheltered. So now I will turn it over to Stacy to cover a few slides about housing Albemarle.
Good evening, Stacy Pathia, Assistant Director of Housing. The, the AC forty four housing chapter really aligns with the, um, housing Albemarle, the housing policy. Staff from housing worked with staff from planning and the long range planning team to really condense what is in that large, um, housing policy document and make it more land use oriented. So the goals are still the same, the objectives are still the same, expanded some in many places, and some of those objectives have been condensed just to make it a little more readable. Housing Albemarle, when it was adopted in July of twenty twenty one, replaced the housing chapter from the twenty fifteen Comprehensive Plan, uh, and the housing policy will be adopted as an appendix into AC forty four. So it's not going anywhere. It's just being presented in a different light through the housing chapter and will continue to move forward as an appendix. Excuse me, next one. Uh, priority actions from the hat, from the housing policy, if, um, some of you were here when that was discussed in the work sessions, it really looked at, uh, if there were several priorities. One was exploring options for using county owned land for affordable housing. That obviously is included in AC forty four draft chapter, uh, providing incentives to increase the production of affordable housing, looking at possibly implementing and adopting an affordable dwelling unit ordinance, creating a housing trust fund along with a housing advisory committee to help the county track progress towards reaching goals and expanding permanent supportive housing opportunities for chronically homeless households. That final bullet point, we are very happy to say has been achieved. That would be the premier circle now known as Vista twenty nine eighty unit, um, development for permanent supportive housing. A lot of the, the recommendations in housing Albemarle were also sort of helping to influence what can be done through a zoning code, um, modernization. Uh, some of the new things that are brought in that were left out of the housing policy is really, um, looking at activity centers and folks focusing housing around those areas, uh, more detailed guidance for area plan updates, specifically including middle, um, housing types. Looking at encouraging adaptive reuse of existing buildings and a greater emphasis on climate action. The Climate Action Plan had not yet been adopted writing the housing policy, so, uh, this allows to bring, but yeah, can bring the Climate Action Park into the housing policy. Yeah. Um, and this is really just a, a continuum of housing needs to show really what the housing policy, housing Albemarle really covers. It looks at housing for the county's most, uh, vulnerable community members, so those experiencing homelessness all the way up to the least vulnerable community members, which, um, workforce housing, uh, for households earning up to one hundred twenty percent of area median income, which keeps getting higher every year. Just a little point of reference, um, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development updated the area median income for the Charlottesville Metropolitan Statistical Area this month. It is now one hundred twenty five thousand eight hundred dollars.
What?
Thank you, Stacy. So again, just to highlight the significant overlap, uh, with other chapters, um, transportation, which will be, um, coming out very soon, connecting housing to daily destinations and daily needs. Land use, how we designate the future land use categories on the future land use map and how those encourage different housing types. Thriving economy, if we're going to encourage more jobs, um, having places for employees to live in the community, community facilities, having the public facilities and services needed to support growth and development, and then resilient community, having housing and transportation choice, um, nature as green infrastructure with development, and then looking at community health and well-being, um, and also local food systems. So just a quick overview of the schedule, uh, for housing that will be going to the Board of Supervisors in about a month. On May seventh, we will also have a lunch and learn for both housing and the community facilities chapter on April twenty fourth, um, at noon. And these are, um, also all posted on the website, um, or will be shortly. For thriving economy and community facilities, those have both come to the Planning Commission, so those will be going to the Board, um, on April sixteenth for a work session. And then transportation coming to the commission on May sixth and the board on May twenty eighth, and then there will be an in-person community meeting on May twenty second. So just a quick highlight of some of the engagement opportunities that are on our website, and also just wanted to note that the housing chapter is now posted on the phase three page, so we encourage folks to visit that and share their feedback on the actions if they're interested and take a look at the chapters as we post them. So again, these are the two focus topics for the commission today. We're also happy to take questions and comments on the objectives and the actions, but are looking for some additional guidance on these land use areas. So with that, I'll turn it over to the commission for questions and feedback. Thank you.
Commissioner Murray, Commissioner Moore, would, would you like to, well, he's out there too, but.
We can start with Commissioner Murray, I don't mind. There he is. Uh, we, we can start with.
Commissioner Murray, would you like?
Sir, are we, are we gonna do one question as?
So, so I propose that we do some general comments just from our, our review, and then we can, we can move on to address the, the two, two points that, uh, they asked us to.
I did have a couple question, questions, not fake questions that are actually statements. Um, and they were just about the parts of the chapter, if that's all right.
Sure, okay. You wanna go first then?
Sure. Lonnie, do you have question, questions, or, or, I don't wanna jump in if you have questions about the points or anything.
No, I mean, you know, you can jump in. I, I'll just start with the general statement. I, I think that this chapter is very much going in the right direction. And, and I think, you know, we can get into some of the details later, but I think, if anything, we can go a little bit farther in some of these, these, um, these areas, but, um, we'll get into specifics later. I'll let you be.
Thanks. I had a question on a objective three point three, just the, um, the language there is, is develop and implement a sustainable housing trust fund for adoption by the Board of Supervisors. And I don't know that I'd seen sustainable quite in that context before. I was just curious what Steph, uh, sort of means with that adjective there.
Uh, that really just means that it is, um, not, it, it's not relying on annual, uh, allocations from the budget. So it would have an identified source of revenue, uh, that automatically goes into that every year.
Got it, like a dedicated automatic, thank you for that. Um, and then a question that actually is really just a, a legit question, because I don't know the answer at all, is, uh, objective four point two, uh, examine the need for and feasibility of implementing a rental inspection district program to ensure safe, decent and sanitary living conditions for tenants. And I was just curious, what happens now? What do we do if there's, are there fair rental homes that have complaints that have issues? I know there have been, I just don't know the process of what we do now.
That's a good question. Um, that is, that's a question for community development.
Okay.
That's actually a question for zoning.
This is, yeah.
So, so you know, part of this is that the, the, and I don't know where we are in this legislation, maybe our council knows where this, where this is. But certainly in Richmond, there was a bunch of sort of tumbling around about putting in force or, or putting forward some legislation that would, that would, that would apply to landlords owning a certain number of houses. Okay, frankly, and I'm not, I know it's, it's sort of natural for me to be snarky, but in this case, I don't know what happened because there was just so much stuff going in and out of the, of the governor's desk and back and forth. So I don't know where we, I don't know where they landed on that, but that was one of the issues that was being pushed forward to say, it is mandatory if you're a landlord with this number of units, then they have to be inspected and then, and this, and then the, the jurisdiction can come in and say, have the jurisdiction that had, has given the authority to set up something to come in to inspect those number of units or to respond if, or perhaps to respond, as many things are, to respond if there's a, if, if, if their attention is called to a potential violation. But I see our council is gonna correct me on that.
Well, I do know that, um, the Virginia Maintenance Code is optional for localities, and so the, the, um, uh, the county does adopt and enforce the building code for new construction, but has not yet chosen to enforce the Virginia Maintenance Code, which deals with the maintenance of existing structures.
Thanks, that's, those are my two questions that I wish to clear.
I, I have a couple, I don't wanna hog the floor, but one of the things I know we've always grappled with is this notion of infrastructure and whether we have enough of it, like the appropriate infrastructure to accommodate the development that we're asking for. Um, I think I read in the, the chapter, maybe we needed ten thousand, you have to find it, maybe ten thousand units more by twenty forty to get to where we need to be. So I guess my question is, how do we start to address those infrastructure needs in this document somewhere to make sure that if someone waved the wand and said, here's your ten thousand units tomorrow I got for you, that we can actually take them, right? Uh, I think we always grapple with roads, schools, all that stuff. It's almost like a chicken and egg thing, but I haven't seen where that's really addressed in this chapter or throughout the document yet. So that's one question, so.
But to be clear, we're, we're in that, in this regard, you're talking, not talking about housing infrastructure, you're talking about other supporting water, sewer, park infrastructure, that type of stuff.
Things that would be impacted by the house, the housing development, right?
Yeah. I mean, I think in some respects, the other chapters are certainly gearing up to try and provide that. There's always that, that tricky balance between what comes first, you know? Does the use that demands the service come first, or do the services that support the use come first? And I, it sometime, it, 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 it sometimes get applied both ways. So I mean, if your specific question is, can we accommodate another?
Ten thousand units.
Ten thousand units of, um, affordable housing or just housing period.
I think it was the for, I think it was affordable housing is what I saw in the, uh, chapter, the draft chapter.
Yeah, and it's, it's a new, the response to that's a very nuanced question. And part of this, like, where in town is it? Yeah, certain parts of town are gonna be more acceptable than other. Generally speaking, I would say that, um, we're always planning to accommodate the future growth within the community and working to get the infrastructure in place. I don't think we're always as successful as we'd be desired to be, and that's a function of, of funding and, and time.
Yeah, no, and I get that. Maybe rephrasing my question a different way, should we be more explicit in our objectives and goals in this document to, to push the needle on that, that, to make sure that we are working towards it, right?
Commissioner Murray, he has his hand up also.
I'm sorry?
No, no, I, I just wanted to add on that. I think it's a, it's a great question. Um, and I think it's one of those things, you know, opportunities to link to other chapters. I think part of this is the, um, the need to make sure that as, you know, we're thinking about housing here, but I think also as we're increasing the supply of housing, we need to make sure that we're also increasing the supply of commercial properties as well and, and other properties that can provide revenue. Otherwise, we end up with an infrastructure deficit. We don't have a way to fund those, those additional houses. So I mean, I think that's something to keep in mind as we're looking here is that the, not just increasing the number of houses, but increasing the overall mix of development so that we can pay for the infrastructure that's necessary.
And I would suggest that Commissioner Claiborne just got into your first question to some degree, and I think we're gonna get, I think we'll have more conversation on, on that topic when we get there, but it, you had some other.
Yeah, I, I'll do one more and then I'll let other people speak, but, um, so he's planting a flag on that.
Commissioner Bibens didn't have much today, he said.
I don't believe it.
I, I wrote all mine down, I will send it electronic.
So, so for that one, this flag in, going from, do we need to move from implied or implicit to explicit? Um, and the second piece is for Dr. Pathia. Uh, I know we've always talked about how many units we kind of lose that, that come up that, hey, if you can buy these within a certain amount of time, you can have them, but if not, they go back to market rate. Is there, I didn't see anything in here about improving or technology or whatever, whatever the barriers are to strengthen that process for us. I didn't see anything in here, I was wondering if you just comment on that. Is that right, is that reconciled? Are we better at that now, or?
So first, I want to, um, go back to the first question you asked in the ten thousand units.
Yes.
I just wanna clarify, that doesn't mean we need to build ten thousand units. It's really creating ten thousand additional affordable housing units in some way. So some of that will be new construction, some of that could be working with existing, uh, rental property owners to make some of their units affordable. So I just wanted to put out there that I'm not, the, the housing policy doesn't suggest like throwing ten thousand units of affordable housing only in the county.
Good clarification.
To the question you just asked, um, we are working, um, on ways to get better. Uh, we did create a list of, it, it's kind of like a waiting list for affordable units, the proffer units to come online. Uh, we are working to expand that in the future. Part of the problem with that list is proffer units are not constantly coming online. And so you could, it's hard to convince people to sign up for something to potentially purchase a house that we don't know when it's gonna be built. We, we know how many proffer units are in the pipeline. Uh, there's about three thousand ish, two thousand ish in the pipeline, but we don't know when they'll get built. So it's kind of hard to advertise that and get people excited. Uh, but that is one of the methods we're using. The, the housing Albemarle also recommends looking at other ways that we can do that. So working with, um, developers to connect them to nonprofits like the Piedmont Community Land Trust, who would then purchase those proffer units from the developer, and then they will be, um, affordable in perpetuity, uh, to, they, they go under ninety year ground leases every time it's sold. So it's really looking at different mechanisms to do that.
Thank you. Commissioner Bibens?
First of all, I want to thank you for putting it on legal side, for putting it on big pieces of paper, that's. So you could read it without grimacing, so one could read it without grimacing, which, you know, I, I compliment people when they make it easy to, to understand the information, because in fact, that in fact is at the essence of what we're talking about. How do we prepare AC forty four and in particular, this particular chapter, so we make it easier for people to understand? While, and, and, and I can say that I have plenty of things here that we can talk about, but as far as I, I agree with, with my colleagues, that this feels like that you've heard our conversations over the past, past few months and that you're, you're doing your best to, to incorporate them. What I, what I would at some point, maybe we'll get to this perhaps down in, in one or two there, is the fact that we've had a tremendous shock to the system in the last two weeks. Well, some might say, um, since November, but in the last two weeks in particular, we've had a shock to the system. And many of those shocks will go against our public, our public partners. One of, for instance, the, the, um, the project that you mentioned up on twenty nine, the principle on that project is trying to figure out if the money's ever gonna come because of some of the messages that's been sent to them from, from up there in Washington. So the whole idea is what does, given that we've got a population, that now that you tell me that eighty percent of the local thing is a hundred thousand dollars and a hundred thousand six hundred and forty, that's eighty percent of the new, the new AMI that was. Having been someone who hired a whole heck of a lot of people, I couldn't tell you the people who are in my organization of well close to four hundred people who would have had a hundred thousand dollars or eight thousand three hundred dollars a month. Gross, that's probably a gross number to be able to spend. I, I mean, I don't even, I don't even know where those jobs are for non-certificated or graduates or graduate type degree people. So that's the piece for me here is I don't know how you get, I don't, I don't know how we, I don't, I think we are, we are being hurt by the affluence of our community on how we sort of manifest sort of a quality of life for the rest of the community. And that's stunning. That's a s- a hundred thousand, six hundred and forty dollars is eighty percent, that's a stunning number.
Do you mind if I, if I just follow on some questions to build, to build on that? Because I, I wanna understand that number a little bit better. And so the number we had in here with ninety seven thousand, uh, and change, I can't see it now, ninety seven thousand and change was eighty percent in twenty twenty four. That's gone to just over a hundred thousand, it's about a little bit more than three percent, four percent, three and a half percent increase. But it's, it's, it's some of this, so one is, okay, well, there's absolute people living here that's driving that up. But how much of that is people of lower income who can no longer afford to live here leave? So, so, and that's being backfilled like people with higher income. So I'm just wondering, how much data do you have in terms of the exodus that's happening? You have some charts here. Which, I mean, I don't wanna, you, you can keep going with your question, I just, I just wanted, I just wanted to see how much of, because you do have some charts that talk, talks about how many percentage of, of the, our, our workforce is coming from other places. Well, some of these people might have lived here in the last few years and can no longer afford. So they're in Nelson, they're over the, you know, they're over the mountain Augusta, you know, they're, they're in Green, they're in other places, but they're not in Albemarle, and I don't think they're in Charlottesville either, so, I mean, I, I, so it's, it seems like it's more than half that are of a workforce that's no longer living here. So you have some data, I'm just wondering, do you have some awareness of how, of what is the exodus? I mean, what is the percentage of people that are leaving? And I'm a, and, and what is their income? I mean, it's fine to say no, but I, I, I think it might be interesting if, if we can begin to understand that demographic, because it, that has a lot to do with a continual increase. And we may actually, yeah, it's not just that there's good salaries in Albemarle County and people that have wealth in Albemarle County, but is that the lower end is leaving? So it may be a double, uh, edge sword there when, when, when it comes to our continual increase in, in AMI. Anyway.
No, I mean, but, 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 but the data, the data that's presented to us is in fact, is, in fact, is leaning in that direction. Because if you're starting to see increases in, in, in the AMI, then what you're also saying is that the pool that that AMI is, that is being developed is being derived from, that there's, there are fewer in the lower side of that, okay? So it's starting to pitch, it's starting to skew higher. And so that really, so it either says that, you know, we have this, we have a couple of things that are going on here. Um, we have people who are underemployed, which is significant. And we have, in this community, um, a bit larger than I would, I would have normally expected. We have a bunch of people that work off the economy. Okay, we have lots of people who work off the economy, I mean, away from the economy, they're not in the.
Can you clarify that, was it?
That means that people who, who do work, but who aren't necessarily what I would say part of the, part of the known economic agents here, so they, they work, but they don't get paid, they get paid in cash, or they work and they don't declare their income. And we have a good number of people, a good, a good sized economy here that is off the books. Okay, and so I think what we're seeing, and I think some of that gets driven because people say, I can't, I can't be fully employed, so I'm gonna go do, do this. And so I think what we're seeing here is we're seeing the realization that, that, that the, the makeup of the economic agents or the people who work here is changing to such a degree that it's starting to pitch towards wealth, it's starting to pitch towards retirement, what assets that come with those kinds of retirement people, and it's starting to pitch towards people who, who could work anyplace else, but they just happen to be working here, whether or not it's at the university or they're, to the extent that they're, they're small entrepreneurs, they're entrepreneur, they're, what they're making is not, is not a function of Albemarle County. That what they're making is a function of someplace else in the world, and I think we're starting to see that in our income.
And I would also add, you know, tying back to economic development, we're now in a world where you don't have to, your headquarters doesn't have to be here, right? So you can make a San Francisco salary or New York or DC or whatever and live here. So that could be another piece, that how many folks actually work quote unquote here, but, you know. live here but quote-unquote work somewhere else, I should say.
We have seen people from Northern Virginia and, and other parts of the country that have moved here and they've still, they're working remotely, but they're making but they're making salaries from, you know, Northern Virginia or San Francisco.
Do, do recall, just, and I see Commissioner Murray has a hand, but I'm glad you bring this up, but I've got a direct reply. And I think we could safely say it's not just a might, that this might be happening, but it is happening. Uh, even a year and a half ago, when, when Sunshine Maython, uh, talked to this up at, at, um, you know, the UVA spot up there. Um, that, um, you know, that level of increase in AMI was 70% over seven years, six, seven years. Uh, cannot be explained just by wage increases, salary increases, and it cannot be explained just by wealthy people moving to town. It has to be inclusive of displacement. There's no other way to go up that high that fast. Um, and, and, you know, our I think if you, if you take a minute to think about like, you know, a college town with a growing tech sector, it's got a cool factor, there's a good music scene, there's a favorable climate. There's a lot of people moving there. There's a lot of college towns that kind of fit that bill, right? Us, Austin, Madison, Wisconsin, Boulder, you know, they're all out there. Um, only one of those, so all those saw huge spikes in housing cost during the pandemic, they all did. Um, only one of them actually reduced their rents in the last couple of years, and that was Austin. Um, and the way they did it was they, oh, their, their housing ecosystem, their policies and favorable financing let them build 50,000 units in '22 and '23. Um, combined, that is, not both years, but uh, now that's a city of a million people, right? Um, but 50,000 units actually brought their rents back down to where they were in 2019, 2020. Um, we're not even, even if we scale that down to say 4,500 or 5,000 units. We're nowhere near that in terms of new units that came on in the last two years to address the spike in rents, to address the spike in housing costs. And so the spike is, remains and keeps going up. And I, I think, y- you know, supply and demand is not the only thing, it's not a perfect sort of econ textbook curve. But supply matters a lot on these things. And, and we have not been using all the quivers in our, in our, rather, all the arrows in our quiver to increase that supply. Um, a- and I, I think, I have a couple of comments on, on sort of objective one that I do want to get to before done today. But, but I think overall, I would like to see us sort of like really shooting hard and shooting accurately with all those arrows in the quiver that we can to increase supply, as well as some of the other social support things that we can talk about as well.
Mr. Murray has a question.
Yeah, Commissioner Murray?
Yes, um, this discussion about median income, I think first, you know, in, in regards to, you know, the influx of folks from Northern Virginia. It'd be nice, we're in other areas, it'd be nice to have some data on that. And, you know, and particularly since we would look at Northern Virginia, we're talking about just a back in the napkin math, um, that, you know, their median income is, you know, 30, $40,000 more than ours. So for them, for someone from Northern Virginia to, to buy a home over here, this is greatly at a discount. Um, they see, even though we see things here as, as, as expensive, they see it as, as a steal. So I think that that's one thing, that'd be good to have some, some data on and how that's affecting our economy. The other thing is, I think that we need to think really in terms of two economies. There's a great presentation, I mentioned it several times, it was done for the Board of Supervisors. They talk between the difference between wage earners and people who earn their income from investments. And I think a lot of the people that are coming relocating to Albemarle County from some of these other areas are not coming here necessarily for employment, but are retirees, they're coming from other places like Northern Virginia with a substantial um investment income. And the, that delta of those folks versus wage earners, they are, they, they're coming with a lot more money than our wage earners are. So when we talk about the median income to afford a house, we're basing it right now in a mix of those two. Of, you know, people are coming with this, this big pot of money and investments and those folks, they're wage earners. And I'm just wondering, and as a question, um, what can we do to sort of separate these two narratives? And could there be benefit in doing that and, and looking specifically at wage earners separately from those that are um investment earners? Um, as we think about affordable housing and providing workforce housing?
That's an interesting concept, because it certainly would bring it down.
Can I just, can I just ask, can I just ask, because it is not Northern Virginia, folks. The people who, I wish we could get out of that posture. Northern Virginia is not the boogeyman on the other side of the road. It is, they're not the people who are moving here. If you look at where people come from, it is, they're coming from all over the world. And so just stop slapping Northern Virginia around, because that's not, that's not where folks are coming to Albemarle County. I mean, yeah, there's some coming from up there, but many of them, uh, uh, because I'll, I'll give you the reason for that. Because if you've got a, a low interest rate and you're living in Northern Virginia, you're not going to move here. Because you're not going to get that low, which is why some of the reasons we summon the resistance to move. So why we're not seeing inventory turnover, because people say, why am I going to give up a 2% mortgage rate to take on a 6% or 7%, I'm not going to do it, I'm going to stay where I am. Part of that is the inherent problem of why we're not seeing some of this inventory turnover in ways that we used to see it turn over. But we can talk about that at some other point.
So I had a couple of questions from the document. I, I will say, I think it's, it's already been stated, but um it's a very digestible document. I think it, it's, um, there's a lot of data, but there's a lot of background. And I also would agree that you've heard a lot of the dialogue that's happened in the Sias um through the years on housing and, and we see it incorporated. So uh, appreciate, appreciate all that work. I'm on page six, where you're, you're talking about the um affordable housing units currently, this is kind of our stock, and then what's in the pipeline, you have a chart. And so I had a couple of questions about the specifics of that chart. So when, when we say preserved units, you got 101 preserved units. What do you mean by that? And, and, and is there a, a program that helps to maintain those units?
So those are primary, primarily the units that are um receiving services from Albemarle Housing Improvement Program. Uh, so they are primarily homeownership units, although some of them could be rental properties as well. Uh, that AIP goes in and does um sometimes significant renovations uh on these houses. And so bringing them back into, in, in, making sure they're going to be safe and, and comfortable and standing uh for another 20, 30 years. Um, and, and allowing the lower and moderate income homeowners who live there now to remain there, it's instead of having to leave.
So they are part of a, a program that helps them, but we could have additional low-income housing um, that's not part of any program, but they're still part of our low-income stock, but it's not being captured here, is that a true statement?
That's, that's correct. It's difficult to identify individual houses or individual properties that are affordable just because they happen to be older or smaller. Right, without doing a, 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 a survey of some kind. And those are, uh, they're a lot of resource-intensive, I've done.
Yeah, I was just trying to, so there's, so there's additional, there's more than two, there are 2,200 affordable houses in the county. There are just some that are just not captured because they're not. Uh, and then when I move to the, to the, in the pipeline, um, proffer units 2,113. What's the makeup there in terms of rentals to uh owner, ownership?
That's difficult to determine. Um, and the proffers, developers will often proffer both. Uh, so they proffer a percentage of the total built, and then as they move through the process, they determine if those will be for sale or for rent.
And are, are you seeing a trend? I mean, are, are they trending more to rent or for sale, or is there?
Uh, no, I don't, I don't think so. It, it just depends on um the developer. Developers are fairly consistent. Um, we know that certain ones are going to build multifamily housing usually, and they will be for rent. And other ones um who primarily build single-family housing, those will be proffer units for sale. And then you have larger developments, say Old Trail, um, that can be a mixture of both, just, just depends.
Okay. I have a couple of others, but I think I can roll them into our, our, well, I think they're, they actually can fit into our, our one and, one and two. So if um the commissioners are, are, are really ready to tackle these.
I would just like, I'd like, I'd like to lift something up to my commissioner more, because I think this is in essence what the problem is. So if you go and look at the 10 largest employers in Austin, Dell Technology, Tesla, a hu- a huge healthcare system. Amazon, Walmart, Apple, IBM, and et cetera. Let me make sure I'm not missing anything here. Only thing we have that's even close to that is the house, are the two hospitals.
Health system, yeah, yeah.
That's the only thing. So, so, so right out the bat, when you're talking about, often you talk about, how do we generate the income to be able to do some of these things? Well, one, and I, you know, you go back to my, 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 uh, my sort of um fried chicken speech here. You need to have more people working here and jobs that pay them something, which means you need to attract people here. Companies that can afford to pay people positions that are not looking to be sold to somebody else and then take the money and run. Which we have a lot of taking the money and running around here, and that's cool, I get it, that's the American way. But it would be helpful if you could have some of those sort of top, I'll even take two of those top 10. Here, would make a significant difference in the type of tax income that would come into the county. Just that alone, so you wouldn't be so dependent, Lonnie talks about that a lot, you wouldn't be so dependent on, on real estate.
And I uh, just to echo what you're saying, while this is housing and that was economic development chapter. I definitely been with you on that, you know, as far as the economic development portion of this. I mean, it can't just be university uh health system and NJIC and hope that we, you know, do better. Um, you know, the, the part, I think, before we get into these two specific questions that I did want to bring up. And, and I do appreciate that how staff has added things that reflect the, the conversations here. I just wanted to go kind of push back a little bit on some of what I see as like the weasely words in, in some of the objectives in the section one. Um, or the, the, the clauses that would enable us to just not do much. Um, and I'm thinking about 1.2, 1.3, 1.5, 1.7. 1.2, for example, in single-family neighborhoods, achieve greater housing supply and diversity by allowing small-scale residential structures such as duplexes, triplexes, and fourplexes. Let's put a period there. Instead of that align with the scale of the existing neighborhoods. The whole idea is we want to add homes to the existing neighborhoods, not align with what's there. That's giving veto power to people that already live there. That's one example.
I think actually, sort of, um, I may, it's kind of the opposite.
Yeah.
It's the idea that you can have homes like that in a single-family neighborhood that can fit into it. Am I speaking, yeah. I, I'm happy to take it out, I mean, you know, it's not, I don't feel too much about it, but I think actually the intent was to make the opposite point.
Okay, I mean, that's great. I just really hope that um.
Maybe, maybe, maybe it can be tweaked to, to emphasize that.
Yeah, I think it's, maybe it's my, my skeptic in me that, that has read a lot of uh strategic plans over the years and sees clauses that soften things.
Fair enough.
Um, the other one that's kind of similar, and this is the only other one I'll pull for today, is just um that first section of 1.7, evaluate which county-owned properties would be most suitable for affordable housing development. I would rather us write something like, commit to developing affordable housing on current and future county-owned land. You know, like make it an action step, uh, rather than just sort of a soft, we're going to take a look. Um, but that's me, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking like, uh, I, I'd like us to be more muscular with some of our steps on this.
Commissioner Murray, I think you had another comment of the general.
I do, it's a, a specific, thank you, Mr. Chairman, a specific question around Objective Six. And, and some of those actions we were talking about are um unsheltered brothers and sisters in the community. And when I read this, it struck me as there's probably a difference in being unhoused because of job or economic reasons versus mental illness. And maybe those solutions are different in terms of our actions. And so I just wanted to flag that, because right now, so they kind of lumped everyone together, right? And I don't think that's really the most productive way, right? As we are looking at how we might reconcile um what we're trying to do here. So I just wanted to flag that, you know, we can put all the housing up in the world, but mental health, for example, is, is not going to cure that, so that was it.
That's a good point. I, I, that, that struck me when I read it as well, like, well, we have them, but we got to, we got to deal with the underlying issues. Um, so, so if, if everyone is in agreement, let's, let's move to the specific topics that, or questions that were raised. Um, and actually, I would like to, to ask Commissioner Claiborne to ex- extrapolate on the point that he was making on infrastructure. Because I think part of this is, at least in my mind, is, is an answer to question one, what are some factors that we should be looking for? Well, affordable housing, if you don't have certain things like transit and, and other amenities or uh, opportunities to work, commercial. Um, it's, it's kind of hard if you don't have a car uh to move around, or you're forcing to get a car, which then adds more, adds more cost, right, to, to living. So just wanted to start with you on, on one, if you had, wanted to elaborate on your point or add some others.
Sure, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, just kind of recapping, when we talk about infrastructure, the things that we have often kind of grapple with those roads and traffic, right? We, we can't put this, this development here because the roads can handle, it's a dangerous intersection. Um, how does that start to bleed into the CIP, right, as we start to move forward? Um, I know we've always depended on, can't think of the name of the program, that's run by V-Di right now, Smart Scale. But I think that's almost a decade turnaround, right, by the time you identify a project and get the funding, get it built, it's probably about a decade. Um, schools, how does that start to play a role in that? And I know that we have a couple of new schools coming online, but as we look 20 years on the road, is that sufficient, right? How's that start to play? And then I guess the utilities piece too, it was the last thing I was thinking of as well. In terms of, you know, the water, the sewer, the broadband, all of that stuff that kind of starts to play together to, to make a safe community. So I'll, I'll pause there, but that's, that was my intention around bringing up infrastructure.
And, and I would just add, or it's really, it was already stated by, by Commissioner Claiborne, but the walkability, right? So maybe just know what I'm saying, if there's walkability to, to community resources, uh, whether it's jobs um, and, and other amenities, groceries and so forth. Uh, that makes it, to me, that makes it a more ideal place uh to locate um housing, low-income housing in particular. So um, at least from my, my standpoint, that's one that, that I would add to that, that conversation. Commissioner Vivens, or Commissioner Murray, do you have, do you want to talk about? Which that's the one that we're discussing?
Yes, I do. Um, so, so first of all, um, I would like to acknowledge the points that Nathan made. I think that those, um, those are very good points. I think we could do more. You know, Croze went first in um, in missing middle. And, and I think it's time for the other development areas to, to also um get missing middle as well. Um, you know, so I think really prioritizing that is one area where we could we can improve the, the amount of housing in our development areas. The other point that you've heard me talk about a lot is we have a lot of empty parking lots in the development area. And a lot of these are currently zoned in such a way that residential uses are not even allowed in those areas. So I think identifying those areas where, um, where we do have these vast unused um, underutilized spaces that are just creating stormwater and polluting streams um, that we can provide incentives and, and specifically make sure that residential is not only allowed in those areas, but encouraged in those areas. Now, to be clear, I don't want to eliminate the commercial that already exists there. But we have these big parking lots that are doing nothing for us. You know, offering TIF, offering other incentives to, to make that um better for people to develop there, I think it is very important. But when we get to the infrastructure, when we talk about the infrastructure necessary to support um new homes. The best places that have that infrastructure already are those spots. They already have water, they already have sewer, you know? You drop an apartment complex in the middle of that parking lot in Fashion Square or Admiral Square or Riley Hill. And you, they can walk to a grocery store, or they can walk to the services they need. You've made something walkable instantaneously. Um, and, and that, you know, that's the best ideal situation. Versus, you know, a greenfield development where you're trying to create the infrastructure from scratch, um, which can be very expensive.
So, so I, you know, I in that place where Nirvana is, I agree with every, whatever he's saying, but all of this is private property. And each of these individuals that own the private property have their own, they have their own pro formas of what makes them say yes to a project or not yes to a project. And I don't know necessarily that a reduction in, in property taxes is going to be the thing that's going to tell somebody that they're going to take on several, several, several tens. several tens of million of, of expenses to put an apartment there. I, I, I could be wrong about that, but I, I just don't, I just, having, having dealt with some of the stuff somewhere, I just don't, don't believe that that's going to be the thing that's going to, going to connect it. Then my, my concern is, I, I started looking at, I started looking at some of the apartments, the newer apartments around our community. And their rents are, are real rents. You know, these are, these are, these are places that are getting seventeen hundred, eighteen hundred dollars for, for a studio on a one-bedroom. If you get to a three-bedroom apartment, you're talking about thirty-five hundred, four thousand dollars. You know, and so if you look at something that's close to, for instance, a business place, then you're also going to pay a premium for being close to the business place. For, you know, I looked at the, the new apartments up there by Santana, Santana, no, not Santana. That's, that's a combination between Santana and a hospital. That's an interesting flip.
Part of Jefferson.
Yeah, then, yeah, up there on, on the hill up there, you know? Um, they're very nice. They're, it's not a big footprint, but their apartments start at just under two thousand and go just over three thousand. Because when you say, you remember the whole, the whole property adage, location, location, location. Unless the county is willing, and this is the piece that I've always been pro about on some of this, unless the county is willing to be the primary agent on a, on a, on a project, which I, which I would say is an interesting thing for, for supervisors and for the community to think about, that's how we're going to get this. You're not going to get it from the free market because the free market can't afford to go into that project at the price point that allows it to be accessible. And that's the piece that I just, I find, you know, somehow or another, we've got to wrestle with that. I also just, I mean, I would take transit off that list because CAT is in a, is in a rebuilding process right now. I am not sure that CAT's going to have the types of, um, routes that we would need to get to the places that we would want, that, that our, our colleague talks about those, those parking, those parking lots. Remember, they go, they don't go to all of those places, first of all, where the big parking lots are right, that we have right now. And if they do go, they go with thirty-minute intervals. I, I don't know about many of us, but thirty minutes does not feel like a convenient way to get any place. If you got to tag on thirty minutes to get someplace, I, I just would say maybe the, the walkability and close to centers of employment, but to rely on the CAT system is not, is, doesn't feel reasonable to me.
Well, I'll, I'll.
Go on.
If I may, I may.
Please.
But another side to that coin, because I, I, my, my wife works in a nonprofit and I, and a lot of the, the clients that go there rely on the mass transit. I mean, a lot of them walk, a lot of them, but most of them is a combination of the transit with the walking. And it's a high percentage. And so.
How many live outside of the, live out sort of in the circle around the county, not?
So the majority, these are majority going of i- in the county. They're in the county. There, I mean, there are some others because they have three locations, but, but these are, majority are coming from the county. They're not coming outside of the county. And so there's, there's actually quite a bit, and I'm sure there's data on it, on a ridership and so forth, but I, I, I still think that transit is an important part of how we think about low-income housing. Because there's a lot of, and, and even if they have a car, they may just have one car. And, and if there's someone that's leaving to work, there's others in that family that don't have access to, to the vehicle. So I, I do think that's, that remains an important, um, I don't disagree with you with changes and, and where is it all going to land, uh, CAT and so forth, but, but I do think it's still an important factor.
Yeah. And I'm, and I'm not, I'm not, I'm just sort of saying like, I'd like transit not to be the first one. Because a- as we look at sort of how are we ordering these things? If I had to say the first one, I would say that the county plays a more active role in putting in long-term, a long-term access, income accessible house co- in, in, income. Because if we, you know, because as the answer that you got, Corey, from, um, the, from the private sector is the private sector will decide. I'll put it up. I, it used to be for like ninety days or something like that. I forget what it was. And if it didn't convert in ninety days, then we were, we were free to push it to market. And so I would like it not to be able to go to market. So you'd have a permanent solution to income accessible housing.
Oh, sorry.
No, no, no.
Along that line of thinking, I was wondering if staff could share a little bit more about the, the housing trust in terms of feasibility. And I know this is kind of crystal balling it, but is that two decades away, you think, from fruition? In my lifetime?
Or in your children's life.
Or, right? Is it like, how, how high in the sky is that?
I, I think it's much more closer to earth than, than you think. Um, there is active discussion going on right now, um, with the Board of Supervisors about identifying uh, long-term funding solutions for the Housing Trust Fund.
Uh, I wanted to zoom out a little bit on, on question number one, which I assume is just about the development areas. If we're talking about activity centers, mixed-use areas and other locations, so just the development areas. In terms of, uh, factors used to analyze other locations for allowing more housing, for me, the factors are yes, and that's it. We don't need to have other factors. If it's the development area, we allow more housing. And then I think we adjust our systems and our infrastructure and our transit as the population grows. So that's my easy answer.
The, the one thing I would come alongside of that was, and, and there's a piece in here that talks about limiting, sort of making the, the areas smaller. So the footprint of the house can be, can be smaller. My only concern, that's something that we've talked about here as a, as a commission, is that we, we balance the shrinking of parcels with the increasing of the quality of life that comes along with that. So that we don't put so many houses in one location that the individuals don't have, they have no green space, or they have no way to sort of interact with each other. And, and so, you know, I always throw back at, um, how do you create? Instead of, instead of the three houses here having, and you had a photograph in here, instead of the four houses having their own, sort of ten by ten piece of green space, that those four houses shared, you know, a green space that they could do things together so that you're, you're in fact creating intentional community. You know, something like that, which, which we all used to have intentional community before we can afford our piece of property in the country. We had, we had intentional community. And how do we go back to that place? So just density for the sake of having density in the development area is not, I'd want that to be also sort of, sort of clothed and enhancing the quality of life with that density, which, um, I think would be, which, which would be helpful. And, and I think if I could go alongside what, what Commissioner Moore was talking about in the neighborhoods, the scale of the, the neighborhoods, that to me also said, how do we have conversations with HOAs? So that HOAs understand that it's beneficial to them to have flexibility in their communities. You know, so how do you make it a positive that the HOA says, well, if I could keep family Y in this community and give them an option to sort of move out of their big house into a more smaller house, then that, that, without having to disrupt their life in a way, then family Y might say, well, yeah, I'm willing to do that if I don't have to sort of go through this onerous process, process of finding out where, where my next live, because I've lived here all this time. So thinking about, having a rethinking about what does community look like multi-generational? Since we're gone, we're there. I mean, we're functionally there. If you look at our fastest growing demographic here, it's over fifty-five. And so if we were sort of think about what does that kind of community look like? If you're trying to increase flexibility in some of the HOA-driven places and we, I won't, I don't need to go into why the HOAs are there. But how do you sort of make it to their benefit done, for them to understand that this is a, that this is a positive for them to sort of not be so, so constrained in how they think housing should be in their, in, in their areas?
Mr. Murray has a comment.
Yeah.
I mean, you got enough for one? Ready to move to?
Mr. Murray has his hand up.
Oh.
Oh, yeah. So just, and, and then I can jump in, I could jump into question two, you know, um, two as well. So, but just in, and to response to, uh, Commissioner Bivens, I think there's two things that we can do to help improve the quality of some of these places. First, we, we need a mechanism right now where if, um, it's to provide an option that a green space requirements cannot be met on site, or it's impractical that those can be, that donation can occur to a fund, uh, an optional fund, um, so that we can use those, those funds for, you know, larger green space opportunities. I think that's one way to accomplish that. So we don't just end up with a bunch of like pocket parks and, and dog parks that are practical, no one really uses. I think too, we also need to take into account for sensitive areas, particularly along streams, repairing areas, longer Ivana, the concept of footprint. So if we have like twenty, twenty acres, uh, sorry, twenty units, then in, in areas that are sensitive, limit the footprint of buildings and, but increase the height so that we can encourage things, that buildings to be taller. So those are things specifically around that, increasing the quality of life in those areas. But moving on to question two and the rural area, um, I think the, the big guiding factor should be, um, well, first, do no harm. And you've heard me say that a lot about the rural area. Um, I think there's opportunities for, um, for allowing more housing in the rural area that is affordable. We, you know, we had this application that came before us just recently in, in Ivy, where the only thing that could be built there, um, were, you know, million-dollar homes, you know, on twenty-one acres or more. A- and that kind of breaks my heart as someone that, that grew up in Ivy, that even if the developer wanted to, there was no other option except that. So I think the twenty-one acre rule, um, needs to be revisited. And particularly, I think there's the other comment that was made that there is no option for bonus density with, with clustering the rural area. I think we need to rethink that. I, what, and I think the guiding principle that I think that we should look at for this is, is the footprint of the houses that would be built, um, the same or less? Um, if so, um, I think that we should consider, you know, allowing some additional units to be built, uh, you know, as bonus density. Um, you know, if you're, if you're talking about, you know, two trailer homes versus, you know, you know, one large mansion, obviously I think that's okay. But if we're talking about, you know, a huge, a number of homes that would be greater in their footprint than, um, than the density that, that's allowed by right, um, that I would not be supportive of. I, so I think we need to look at, um, what is the impact on the landscape? Is this ultimately meeting with the goal and protecting the rural area? Um, or is this going to cause a larger impact than, than would have occurred otherwise? As long as I think we use that as a guiding principle, um, I think there's ways that we can provide for more density in the rural area. I also think we shouldn't create arbitrary winners and losers. Um, I think anything should be a consistent policy that we apply across the board, not unfairly, um, awarding some people, um, over other people. So I think that if we, you know, for example, you know, trailer parks, if we wanted to say for every, you know, have a policy for every, you know, eh, every development right, you know, could equal two trailer homes, some policy like that I could agree with. Artificially deciding on, you know, just granting development rights that someone doesn't have to build trailer homes because they say it's affordable, I'm not, I'm in favor of that. I think that's a, a terrible idea. Obviously, I think in terms of, um, we need to consider water usage. Um, infamously, Ivy, um, was removed as a development area because it ran out of water. And I think that that's something we need to keep in mind too. So proximity to infrastructure, even when we do allow some additional development, we need to keep in mind that there are, you know, limitations on resources in, in the rural area.
A good point. Commissioner Bivens, can I start with you?
Sure. Thank you, Chair. Thank you. So I'm, I'm glad, I'm glad that Commissioner Murray brought up the, the, the position, the, the, um, project that was, that was, uh, I think Spring Farm or something of that nature last week, because one of the things that I was, through Spring Hill, Spring Hill, um, of last week, is one of the things I was sort of pondering about is like, why, again, my whole comment about you've got these two very sort of established communities out there, why couldn't we have figured out a way to put, or why couldn't he have figured out a way to put, um, some small sort of cluster, they still could be a gazillion dollars, but a plus, cluster housing. I thought I was being called home.
My apologies.
Nah, I was being called up. I'm hearing music. I've, it's finally over. I'm hearing music as, as the stairway comes down.
The Oscars orchestra.
How come we couldn't figure that out? You know, why is it that, you know, I, I'm, I'm familiar of, of the counties in Northern Virginia where they said you have to have twenty-five acres to build a house here. You don't have twenty-five acres to build a house here? Well, we don't want you. Go to Culpeper. We don't want you out here in Rappahannock. We don't want you out here in Havana. And while everyone's going to think, oh, Julian's just trying to take away the rural character of Albemarle County. No, what I'm saying is, if you say, as Lonnie said, that you have to put one house on twenty-five acres as opposed to those six houses across there, but in a, or maybe twelve houses in a smaller footprint, that would have created a very expensive, because those are, can be very expensive houses. But they would have created a way that sort of said, here's a new way, here's a different way of living here. So, so for, so that one for me is, I just sort of look at, looking around the, uh, looking around the, the county when I was trying to figure that what would affordable houses look, look in, look like outside of the development area, because certainly we've kicked the development area around a lot. You know, I looked at things like Emerson Commons in Croze, uh, which is a cohousing. So how do you facilitate cohousing? So multi-generational cohousing? How could we do that? When I, I looked at sort of off-site manufacturing, so that you'd have a lighter footprint on that. I'm, I was struck by a number of people that we've seen over the years have talked about putting floating platforms in so that they don't actually told me about this and now I'm going to mess it up. They don't actually dig into the ground, but they have some sort of technology that they put it on top of the ground and it can, it can, it can withstand a significant or not, it can withstand a good-sized structure, but yet it's got a soft, it's got a soft footprint on the ground. Those kinds of things which sort of say, how do we do something like that? I looked at my, one of my favorite ones is Qualley Road, Office Secretary Road, where this was a community that was built to support the quarry that was there. And you have this wonderful, it could use a bit of perhaps some refreshing. But you have this collection of houses there that all speak to each other and they're right off of, they're right off of Secretary Road. So thinking about not necessarily how do we eliminate that, but remember before nineteen eighty, there were lots of places in the county that were around certain centers. Esma being the one that's been before us the most, saying, don't forget us here in Esma. And it was after eighty when we sort of moved into this preserve, preserve it all, that we started backing away from a history that was about small, s- succinct communities being built around one of them. You look at Secretary, you look at the other end of Secretary Road in Scottsville, there's all these wonderfully sort of individual and modestly sized houses that are close to one another that have neighbors that you can walk to if you need to, in your, in your neighborhood. Over there, uh, on, uh, on Morgantown Road, again, a community in the rural part of the, of the county that has different types of houses. There are some bigger houses there since now because some of the lands turned over, but they were modest communities. So why? Why are we so wedded to this recent history? So post nineteen eighty, when, and forgetting about the history when we, when people gathered together in small communities in our county and put modest housing. And I'd like to know how we can get back to that. Because that, I think, is how you start thinking about the different aspects of housing. If it's not always the, 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 the exclusionary zoning, which some of this is actually, when you tell somebody they can only have twenty-five acres, they have to have twenty-five acres in the rural part of the county, the bill of housing, let me help you folks, that's exclusionary. Unless it's inherited land, that's exclusionary. And so if we can back away from that kind of posture, and I know I'll get hit about this, but I, please. That if we can come back to that pre-time, when people were, just look at the maps. I can give you, I'll send you a whole list of areas. That you can see that these are areas that actually included people in them, as opposed to what I think some of our zoning now is exclusive. And that's, so that's really my, on this number two, how do we come back to things that's both honors the desire to be green? But also, also honors the fact that we were something else before nineteen eighty. And can we not perhaps think about some of those things that were good about pre-nineteen eighty as opposed to excluding it all?
Yeah, before moving, moving across, I, I actually, I, I think, I think that Commissioner Bivens has a phenomenal point here. It's we, we lose sight of history and then we try to, we try to build on, on just current knowledge. And we forget about things that were working because not only were those homes, uh, that were affordable, but they were, they built community. I think that was an excellent point. So I would recommend that staff study a number of these communities that we have that are still vibrant. And these homes are thirteen, fifteen hundred square feet. They may be on a two-acre lot because they're. They may be on a two acre lot because they're rural, but that actually allows you to farm as well. Instead of building a five thousand square foot home and, and a, and a long driveway and, uh, so, I, I would, it, it would be an interesting study that you look at, you know, what makes this, what, what made this a, an affordable community to begin with? And are they still affordable? I think some of them still may be affordable, certainly in certain parts of the county. My daughters.
No, they're calling you. See, that was a good point. So it's calling you up. It's calling you.
Yeah, well, I have a daughter that's traveling and she's critical. Anyway, my apologies again. Uh, so I, I would, I think there is, there would be great opportunities to, to learn from the communities that we have.
To be clear, are we talking about, um, existing structures that are out in the rural areas that we gentlemen are referring to? Are you talking about building new, small structures in the rural area?
We're talking about sixing structures, sixing communities that are in the rural area, that you can learn by their size or scale and the size of the properties that they're on. So we don't have to build twenty five acre lots, but we can still build communities on smaller lots. And again, there's still going to probably be a couple acre lots, but, but they're, and they're also close to each other. And, and they're serviced by it, so they're, they don't all have this, uh, you know, a, a, a long driveway. They're, they're off of, they're, they're off of roads, V dot roads, and they just have a, you know, pretty small driveway coming into the house, and it's a twelve, fifteen hundred square foot house. There's plenty of those communities out there, so we can, uh, what I think what Commissioner Vivens is suggesting, and I'm, I'm, I'm coming alongside of him, that, that we could learn from that.
But you, just to be clear, we're talking about, we're not talking about, we're talking about learning from the existing communities and trying to replicate those, uh, small lots.
When you study it, there may be things that you.
Public road that.
Sure. What are the takeaways? If you study it, if you intentionally go into it and say, hey, what can we still learn from these communities? Are there things that we can apply? There may be things you don't, that maybe they're not applicable today. But I would venture to, to, to guess that there's a lot of things that we can, that, that we could, um, apply.
Okay, thank you. Now, I will say to add to, to Louise, if you look at that, if you can find them, there were often some sort of small, sort of a post office or a community store that was within easy striking distance. So when we talk about some of our, um, yeah, everybody gets sort of, they get crossroad communities. If you start talking that, you know, everybody starts jumping up and down about you're going to put a racetrack out there. But if, but they were close to places that, that sort of provided a next, provided a, a hub, had, had, had the central place for, for some of these places.
So if I could, yeah, if I could just add a little bit more to that, I mean, um, staff brought forward a proposal, earlier talking about, you know, just as a reminder, in the rural area, we have two kinds of sort of division, you know, subdivision, so you have your development rights, and then you have the twenty one acre rule that allows you to make as many twenty one acre parcels as, as you'd like. And so, um, the staff brought forward the proposal for the development, um, right parcels, which I think is a, a good move in the right direction. But it also still leaves those twenty one acres. You know, and there's a proliferation of sort of what I call McMansion, um, farm estates throughout the rural area, and these are, these are bad for the environment. They're not, they're rarely legitimate agriculture any, any way, shape or form. Um, often they're mowed front to back, um, with no kind of ostensible, no stream buffers or anything. And they're, they're terrible for affordable housing. So they're, they're not really achieving for us in any kind of way. So, um, I think looking at ways that we can rethink that twenty one acre rule as well as the development rights, so that we're not, we're not greatly increasing the development of the rural area. Particularly not the develop, most particularly not the footprint of development of the rural area. But we're considering ways that we can, um, encourage clustering. And even if we have to offer some sort of, um, some sort of bonus density, some, something along with that. But you know, what could we, what could we learn to sort of, to look at, look at ways of encouraging smaller parcels? Because if you have a twenty one acre parcel, there's no way that any home there is ever going to be affordable. That's not going to say a two acre, um, property is going to be affordable, but at least there's a chance, and we need to give things a chance.
Yeah, I'm very supportive of just about everything. My colleagues have said, certainly agree with the twenty one acre rule. I'm not sure who can even afford that. I mean, that's, it's kind of crazy, but another discussion for another day. But going back to the neighborhoods you all were describing, I grew up in one of those and I, I think it works beautifully and it doesn't destroy the, the rural fabric, if you will, of, um, of that area. But going back to, I guess, factors, some of the things I had chatted down, of course, were, were scale development. So we, you've been hearing about that. You know, they even go to the quantity of homes in a given development or the amount of site disturbance, for example. Um, I've checked out location, uh, lo, being located near public safety facilities might be an incentive, right? So if you're near the rescue squad, maybe, or the fire station, maybe that's a signal that, hey, we could put a little bit, little bit more, uh, development in that area. One of the things I, I do want to share is I don't think I'm a fan of us putting all of a single type of home in one area. And to me, it's like an income scarlet letter, if you will. So we shouldn't have thirty mobile homes in the middle of the rural area, in my mind, right? I'd much rather see, um, a mix, right? You can have some duplexes there and, you know, single family, whatever it may be, but just flagging that because if a proposal comes with, you know, those, those types of homes are usually purchased by those who are more economically disadvantaged. You're just putting them out in the middle of nowhere and you have to fend for yourself, right? So I think the more we can welcome all, if you will, in those developments, um, I think the better. So I'll, I'll kind of pause there.
Can we, so, so are you saying that, so I'm, I'm not, I'm not even going to use that, the mobile home, because I, I want to use off-site manufacture.
Okay.
Because off-site manufacture gets to what you're talking about. I could have a nine hundred foot off-site manufacturer, we could have a thirteen hundred or even a bigger house. I've been looking at some, I've been challenging Commissioner Moore to look at some, some projects that they're, they're really, really smart looking. You often see them in Scandinavian countries, where they have these just wonderful natural woods, it's off-site, it's an off-site production, they come in, they put it in and they leave. And so I think that's one of the things that if we can watch our, our language and come away from some of the words that people say are boogeyman words.
Yeah, that's a good point.
And so, because if we look at some of the new kinds of ways and, and the ways that houses are being constructed today, or dwellings are being constructed today, they can be, the footprints can be absolutely brilliant, you know? I don't know that we're, I don't know necessarily that we, except for a small time of year, could do, um, funneled, funneled concrete. But I've been looking at some of the funnel concrete houses that have been taking place in, in Texas and in Arizona and places like that, stunning. I'd move, live in one in a second. And it's, it's a quick way to make a house, and it's a safe way to make a house, and it's environmentally sound to the extent that you'll allow me to say that concrete is sound. I know the architects and minds think that concrete is not necessarily environmentally sound, but if you'll allow that.
Using fly ash.
Thank you, thank you.
Just real quick, I'll say that in, in my neighborhood, there is that kind of mix. Like there are manufactured homes, there's very large expensive homes, there's middle-class homes, um, all along my streets. So that is a, a natural pattern that you will find in, in areas of the rural area right now. And I don't know how we get back to that. But most importantly, I don't want to lose that. I think that, um, you know, I think really strongly supporting our programs like AHIP that preserve that existing housing is critical, so we won't lose that affordable housing that exists already and displace the kind of diversity of, of, that we have in the rural area, which is one of the things that makes it great right now.
Uh, so like, so I'll go last and it might be least, but, uh, just to, uh, in the parlance, we sometimes use plus one, what some others have said, particularly Commissioner Vivens, uh, about both history and, uh, sort of the history of this community, this county, this place and the various villages around it, as well as plus wanting the, uh, uh, trigger words that, uh, sometimes prevent progress on certain kinds of, of development. You know, before, just to echo what, what Commissioner Vivens said and, and what Commissioner Murray too, I've learned a lot from over the years. Uh, it's just that, you know, before nineteen eighty, we built affordable homes in the rural area, uh, all over. You know, we built villages for people who worked for a living. That's Quality Row, Porter's, Whitehall, that unnamed cluster of homes on Scottsville Road, just a little bit past Biscuit Run. You know, they're, they're villages that grew organically, they grew for good reasons, people lived there, people went to jobs, you know? And, and then we decided to preserve things in amber. And, I mean, every stakeholder I've, I've come across and talked with has, has been in favor of preserving the affordable homes in the rural area. Nobody's saying, no, get rid of those. I mean, everybody wants to preserve those. But it's also about sort of then preventing anything else like them. And so effectively, what we've, what we've done is make it so that only, the only new things in the rural area are things that are very expensive, you know, because the money talks. You know, there's a lot of stakeholders that I come across who are opposed to achieving any more affordable homes in the rural area. I, I, I hear that often under the banner of environmentalism. I, I personally, you like it's a type of weaponized environmentalism that's serving certain people but not others. And it's an environmentalism that to me sometimes boils down to, we don't want more of certain kinds of people here. Um, and that's a, a real thing that I think we need to get past and get through. So as far as the factors we should consider for reviewing affordable housing proposals that are outside the development area. I mean, for me, the most important things are, is there enough water and septic? And is this going to adversely impact the water quality in the watershed that feeds ACSA? We can talk more about, that's probably not enough. But I think it's a good start.
Yeah, that's an interesting, that's an, sort of, if you look at the watershed question, that's interesting. Because if we were to look at the stuff that's on the other side of twenty, sort of east of twenty, I don't know if the, if the, if the topography there flows into the Ramana for, to, to, to up here. You would know that better.
Uh, ACSA's water, the, the feed from there is largely the western and northwestern part of the county.
So what you've just said is really, it's, so how do you do that in a way, yes, that you don't impact? You know, my, my, my whole piece is let's not limit it to one, to one variable. So there's the western parts, yes, we don't want to impinge upon the, 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 the water supply. But the bigger point is, how do we, how are we, how are we good stewards of the earth? How do we do the things that don't, that sort of perpetuate sort of damage, but in fact enhances livability in a particular location? And some of that is a smaller footprint, some of that is a much smaller, and some of it's not sort of green, green lawns that have to be maintained by, you know, by talented people who do that kind of thing. And so that's the piece that I struggle with when we see, um, cookie, I shouldn't use that term. When we see a sameness or a limited, a limited footprint in some of our new developments. And that we not really are seeing, we're not really being offered the variety that I think replicates life or replicates, replicates where we live. The replicates our history. And, you know, to come to some people about the missing middle, I would say if you come to Jack Jewett or if we go to some of the other places around here, the missing middle was there before it became, before, before, before it became a thing. So there's lots of houses that are different sizes, that that is, so really what we're just talking about is can we go back to what we were? To go forward to the, to go forward in a way that will be more inclusive to the people who are going to live here.
I'll just quickly add, that's the hardware watershed that I think you're thinking of there.
I think I've given you quite a bit. However, before we. Mr. Murray, sorry, my apologies. Out of sight, out of mind. Mr. Murray, you think you're a mute?
Oh, sorry, I was just going to say that, uh, the question was raised about what watershed that was, um, on that side of the county. And I believe that's the, the hardware watershed. And just because it's not our, our water supply, it's someone's water supply. And so I think that that's, you know, I, I would encourage us to think about impaired watersheds and think about stream quality as opposed to just simply water supply areas.
Well, be, before I do, um, put us on recess until six, I, and, and of course, we have the pleasure of having Mr. Pathia here in a while. And so I did want to ask you, um, on our current policies and incentives, can you give us an update on where are we? Uh, how is it performing? Have we had any takers in our incentive policies? I know that here we've asked a question on multiple times of applicants. Why haven't you taken advantage in that, you know, they, they all have the reasons why. I just wanted to get your, your thoughts. Where are we? I hear that maybe there was a few now in, in the pipeline that might be interested. So if you can give us that update, I think it would be helpful for the, for the.
Absolutely. Uh, I, there, there have been conversations with a few developers about the incentive program. At least one of the projects is most likely going to be one hundred percent affordable housing, uh, but located along twenty nine. So they, you know, they will need that extra funding and it's a, it's a, it's a good way for the county to be able to invest in that project without having to have one lump sum upfront. There's a couple other developers that we are in discussion with as well. So we're working out the details, seeing how it's going to work. But we will definitely keep you informed as they move forward.
And is there a reason why you're seeing these now starting to accept it? Or take advantage of, of the incentives and we weren't for a while?
Well, the, the housing policy was not fully in effect until March first of last year. So it's only been a year that the housing, that, that twenty percent affordable housing has really been active. Um, and so it's been, it's taken some time for developers to figure out how to make it work. Remember that this incentive is there and those conversations are beginning.
That's fair. With that, I will put us into recess until six P M. To reconvene the planning commission for April eighth, twenty twenty five. And Mr. Murray is on as well?
Yes, he is.
Okay. So we're gonna, uh, so plat, public comments on matters pending before the commission, but not listed for public hearing on these agendas, if there's any that we have today.
I don't have anyone online either.
Nobody online? Right, commissioners, the consent agenda? It's like there isn't one. And we don't not have one. That's what you were trying to, that's. Right, so we're in the public hearing. So we hear the, the presentation for S P two zero two four, zero 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 twenty four, four hundred, Ryle Road West.
Yes, good evening, commissioners. Uh, my name is Chris Taggart, senior planner with the Planting Division, Mount, Albemarle County Community Development. Also here tonight is Margaret Malaschessi, who assisted with the review. I'll be giving staff's presentation for the special use permit application. Subject properties located at four hundred Ryle Road West, hidden zone, light industrial. The surrounding area is mostly residential with an additional light industrial parcel adjacent to the west. As a reminder, Ryle Road is the entrance quarter. The site consists of two parcels which are mostly paved with chain link fencing surrounding much of the paved area. At the front of the par, uh, at the front of the property is a brick faced office building, and at the rear is a large metal shed. The spur, uh, the special permit request is for outdoor storage, display and sales of plumbing material and equipment in the E C overlay district. But I'll refer to this as outdoor storage. The po, proposal includes a storage area to the north and west of the existing brick faced building, which is highlighted in orange on the concept plan. There are also, there is also an existing storage area at the rear of the site indicated in blue. A berm landscaping and metal picket fence replacing the chain link fencing along Ryle, the Ryle side of the storage area to minimize visual impact. Additional landscaping is also pro, proposed along the employee parking lot. East side of the main building, or to the east of the main building, and in the southwest corner of the site to further limit visibility of the storage area. And between the main building and the street to screen existing equipment and coordinate the landscaping proposed along the storage area. The proposed use is a by right, is by right in the zoning district, but outdoor storage is a special use in the E C. S Ps for outdoor storage are reviewed under section thirty point six, which limits the factors to be considered to determine whether the outdoor storage is consistent with the E C design guidelines. A R B and Site Review Committee reviewed this proposal in January and requested revisions focused on screening of the proposed and existing storage areas from the view of the, the E C. At its March third meeting, the A R B reviewed an updated plan that include revisions to show the existing vegetation along the eastern and western perimeter sites will remain, and adding screen shrubs along the portion of the western perimeter of the site directly east of the building and then planting it along the front east of the entrance to the employee parking lot. They are be considered the revised plan unanimously voted to recommend approval with conditions. The conditions are listed here and we can bring them back up if needed. On February tenth, the required community meeting was held at the place's twenty-nine hydraulic C A C main. There were questions on the development of the site, but no comments on the special use permit. Staff did not identify any unfavorable factors and the favorable factor for their request is that outdoor storage use would be consistent with the E C design guidelines if the A R B's recommending conditions are upheld. For this reason, staff recommends approval of the special permit for outdoor storage. I'd be happy answering any questions and I can bring up the motions and conditions of approval when the commission's ready.
Commissioner Murray, do you have any questions? We can start with you.
You're muted, Mr. Murray.
Sorry, no, I do not.
So thank you, Chair. My questions will be for the applicant.
And I also do not have any questions for staff. So we'll ask, um, the applicant, they would like to come up to provide their presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I'm Valerie Long with the Law Firm of Williams Mullen. We are representing the applicant. Uh, which is now the landowner of this property. Um, and joining me tonight, uh, virtually are members of the applicant team. I think they're all virtual. Uh, we also have someone from Ferguson Enterprises here who might be able to answer questions on a more operational level that might come up. But there's also others from Ferguson attending. Thank you for, from staff for their presentation. Um, I think that covered most of the issues. I'm going to run through some of these really quickly. Please do not hesitate when I'm finished to ask me to go back to any of these slides. I imagine many of you are fairly familiar with this location, which was owned by the phone company literally since the nineteen seventies. Um, it is zoned light industrial. As, um, Mr. Taggart mentioned, it, their proposed use for Ferguson is a wholesale waterworks distributor. Is a buy right use at the, in the light industrial zoning district. The, uh, reason we're here tonight is that because any materials stored outside. Materials for sale or display stored outside on property along an entrance corridor requires a special use permit to determine whether the proposed screening would bring the site into compliance with the A R B guidelines. Uh, we have some aerial photographs that we were able to pull from U V A's wonderful aerial photograph, photo database. Demonstrating, it, it was really interesting to me to note that the site has remained largely unchanged since the early nineteen seventies. Um, and you can see, um, back from the days when it was again owned and used by the phone company, you had their trucks out there all the time stored and even the back of the property looks very similar to the now as it does in that twenty thirteen photo. The existing conditions, again, I imagine many of you are familiar with it, but just in case you haven't been by lately, because it was developed in the nineteen seventies when the requirements were much, much different, obviously there was no architectural review board or entrance quarter regulations, minimal screening. Uh, the, the site is not great from a visible, visual, um, aesthetic perspective. Uh, the chain link fencing obviously, um, easily reveals the materials and, or wouldn't reveal materials and equipment stored on site. Uh, very few plantings, there are a handful of trees, uh, but they don't show up well. Um, lots of things stored. These are all obviously from Google Street View. Um, but I just wanted to show those conditions, um, for reference. We also have, these are some representative photographs of the types of materials that Ferguson would use at the site. Just for reference in terms of what we're talking about, it's piping, again, wholesale waterworks. These are fire hydrants, part of facilities, obviously, for waterworks. More piping. Again, just sort of what that might look like. This is the existing conditions plan. Yeah, Mr. Taggart walked through it, but really just Ferguson would use the existing paved parking area, uh, for storing their materials. The area in the back that's shown in kind of a purple shade, the zoning staff had determined that, that the storage of materials had existed there since before there were regulations against it. Um, so that is legal non-conforming. But we're pulling that area into the special use permit application, so it would then become conforming along with the rest of the site. Um, so we're, uh, proposing to replace the chain link fence. Uh, you can see those handful of trees there in the gate. Uh, there's also mechanical equipment right in the front of the building with no screening. Um, that we're going to screen. This is the conceptual plan that would be, um, informative or binding on the site plan amendment when that is brought forward. Proposing to replace the chain link fence with a new aluminum picket fence. And most importantly, a new landscape plan that includes a berm along the front. And I should mention, by the way, that, uh, Timmons Group is the civil engineers we're working with and their landscape architect to design this plan. So there's a berm and a, a pretty robust screening plan. New plantings all around. These are new, um, screens, screening plantings that we added at the request of the architectural review board. We also added this line that is fifty feet from the entrance corridor. And we, um, are agreeing to a condition that says anything taller than the eight foot fence that's stored has to be beyond that line. The topography of the site is that the terrain slopes down as you move away from Rial Road. But the fence is eight feet tall. Most everything else will stay the same, including the existing employee parking lot. We are adding additional screening here and here, and then also here. This is an old sort of driveway that won't be used anymore, so, uh, they're going to close that off and add more landscaping to help screen the back of the site. And this is just a, an enlargement, obviously, of that same area. Um, I would note, and I have some photos, this is new landscaping we're proposing along the front of the building. It's not actually required to screen the materials that are being stored. But we thought that it was appropriate to extend the plantings to the front of the building as well, and most importantly, to screen that outdoor equipment. This is, uh, obviously just a section view of how the landscape plan would function with the berm to help, um, provide some density and variety of plantings and elevation to help screen. And then you can see a representative of how the, the pipe might be stored on a rack. This is a sample of the type of fence that is envisioned and some aerial views of how that would look, the new planting plan would look on site. I will notice that.
Oops, sorry.
It's okay. There's also the new screening we, is not shown here because of the existing vegetation, but we do have some additional screening there. The A R B determined that there was a need for that to help screen that view. That mechanical equipment will be screened and these are the rending, renderings, conceptual renderings that Timmons Group prepared for, showing how um, over time, the planting plan, uh, will develop and substantially improve the views. Both the views of the property from the entrance corridor as well as screen the outdoor materials that are being stored. And I'm, of course, happy to come back to any of these. This is the one image that's not from Google Street View. This is just taken. Um, as you can tell, it was right around that second snowstorm we had this year to demonstrate from that particular vantage point. How that new screening both along the front and then also along that former travel way will help screen the storage from that vantage point. And that, hopefully you would agree, is, is a substantial improvement over existing conditions. Thank you. And I would be obviously happy to, don't think we have anyone here from the public, but I'd be happy to respond to any questions or comments or address any questions you all may have.
Thank you. Commissioner Moore, have any questions for the applicant?
Uh, I don't at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. Just one confirming question, that all the materials, I guess they would inert materials, like they're not chemicals or anything like that. It's just all like the products you, you had shown in the slide.
You are correct.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bivin? You want, Commissioner Murray, Commissioner Murray, you have any questions?
Sure. Um, so obviously this property existed way before, you know, our stormwater ordinance. Is there any, is there any consideration to maybe removing, taking some of the, 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 um, impervious surface and making it permeable to absorb some of the stormwater on site in that, that storage area?
I know they're working through some of the issues. There will be a site plan amendment that will be required, so we're not at that stage yet. Frankly, our client and Ferguson didn't want to invest the funds in preparing a site plan until they knew if the special use permit would be approved. But that's certainly something they're working through, those issues with Timmons Group.
Um, I'll just mention that because there is existing, um, there's existing parking lot there. It would qualify for some of the county incentive programs for, for, um, impervious surface removal if they did want to apply for those. Just so you know that that's, that's out there, something that, that could be done if you, you wanted to do it, so.
Great. Thank you. I will, uh, look into that with our clients and I'm sure Timmons Group is aware of that, but thank you, because I was not.
Along the, the lines, um, the, the back area with the non-conforming storage, i- is that paved as well?
Areas of it are, portions of it, not all of it, but probably most of it is. Some of it, the pavement is worn away a little bit, so. And some grass is kind of grown up in some areas where the pavement is broken, but.
Thank you, sir. Uh, good to see you, Ms. Long. So could we go back to the, over to the sort of the, the macro piece there, the, the heli- bird's eye view of the?
Yes.
Of the, could we just go back to that for a second?
Back to you.
I think it'd be helpful for you to share with the commission and the community, just in general. There's actually two pieces of property there, one which is not going to be developed.
Thank you.
That might be helpful for people to appreciate that. Not trying to lead the applicant, folks. I'm just, I was at the meeting and I heard a diff- a, a more elaborate, um, presentation.
Thank you. I appreciate the reminder. Uh, Mr. Bivins is correct. Um, this area in the middle, so first, there's two tax map parcels. The first one is this rectangular one along the frontage. The second one is essentially everything else inside this circle. In this area and also this area in the back. This area, the four acres in the middle, is owned by the state. State acquired that land from the phone company for the Western bypass project. And the, unlike many landowners, perhaps most landowners who either sold or lost their land to the state for that project, apparently the phone company elected not to repurchase it. Possibly because it's, you know, kind of not, there's not a lot to do with it. You don't really need it. The rest of the site is, is nice and large. But the rest of the tax map parcel does extend to the back, but, um, the applicant is not preparing to use this site at all. So the benefit is, um, you know, about six acres remains undisturbed.
Thank you. So, and, and so I know that my, one of my, one of my, my commissioner colleagues asked you about water management. And so are you doing anything other than the berm, which also will prefer?
Not, not in connection with the special use permit. As part of the site plan application, there may be, um, stormwater management regulations that will apply and other things like that. Like I said, we haven't gotten to that point yet.
Because there is a house at forty-five twenty-five A, I believe that's a single family residence. The other, beyond that, there's a comfort source or some, one of those. But I think this one right next door is a.
This is actually a, a business.
So it's one next door, okay.
Yeah, this parcel here is also zoned to light industrial and I believe the one, the next one might be.
It is.
Okay.
It is, okay. So I know having, this is, this is sort of part of my drive home. And so there's lights over there that blink and I real, I recognize that there's sort of the, the forty-five eleven, forty-five eleven. Oh, what is that? I J K, yeah, all of those. They, they also have that blinking light over there. How are we gonna?
Yes, thank you. I worked with our client, who's now the property owner, and they worked with electricians and those lights have all been disc- either disconnected, removed. I'm not sure if they took the bulbs out or just disconnected them, but um, I am told that they are no longer in operation.
And I can, I can attest that, I can attest that, that they aren't, they aren't now. But I assume, given that you're going to have several million dollars worth of inventory over there, I, I wo- I wouldn't want my inventory dark on that road. And I assume there's going to be some light, some, some form of keeping it lit.
Presumably there'll be some site lighting for the reasons you noted. Um, any new light fixtures will be subject to the, um, obviously the site plan regulations as well as the architecture review board guidelines, including the requirement that light fixtures be full cutoff fixtures and not spill over, that sort of thing. They're not planning any site lighting for more traditional purposes. Their hours of operation are, you know, in the range of like seven thirty to four or four thirty. So, um, anyway, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Um, well, I don't think we have many, but we'll open it for any public comments? If we have any. Not online? All right, then we'll close the. With media and bring it, bring it back to the commission.
Sure. So, um, I, I was in, I was at the, uh, the C I C meeting for this and I, 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 I would support what, what was said by the applicant that th- there was really much more question. There was actually, it was very interesting because I don't think anybody really realized that the telephone company has sort of vacated the premises for a while now. And that just because there's just sort of these random trucks that are sort of scattered across the parking lot. So if anybody wants a random truck, talk to the truck, talk to this telephone company, because I think they probably have something for you. And so the really big thing was, um, that the, that, that group of housing that I think is squirrel run or squirrel something over there. That is, you go down Earlyville Road and you take a right there, you take a right into the, there was concern because there was, and I can attest to coming on Rial Road. There was just this sort of light that had this sort of non disco beat to it that was disturbing to people over there. And I, and I can attest that that's been gone, but that whole idea. That'd be okay. That just could be, we wouldn't be doing, we wouldn't be doing parties over there. I can guarantee you that. But it didn't, so you know, whatever. Um, and so that is better. And I, I think I will say, having this being one of my routes every day. That, and I'm, I know I'm going to get in trouble with the A R B on this, isn't it interesting how pipes have to have can't be seen below an eight foot, an eight foot fence? But trucks on parking lots that are, you know, selling trucks can be seen without any, without any sort of im- impediment to their view. So it, I, because I, I thought that that was a nice way to, to hide some waterworks. Wouldn't it be nice to hide some Mack trucks too? So that's my, that's my A R B comment for the moment.
Any other comments, Commissioner Murray?
Nope. I, I'll just say it seems like an improvement. Oh, sorry, can you hear me?
Yep.
Uh, uh, no comments really. I'll just say it seems like an improvement.
I mean, remember across the street, that new, that new apartment complex is going to be across the street.
Yeah, there's a brand new large apartment complex. So you really are, that, that, that corridor is actually going to, is getting a significant upgrade there, so. Thank you. I, I, I just say thank you for that.
I agree. I think there is, it's definitely an improvement from what's, what's there now, so. There's no other conversations or any commissioner that would like to entertain a motion? Can we?
Oh, yeah, it's my, my district, sure. Well, you're the one, yeah, it's your C A C is my district. That's true, that's true. Uh, I moved to recommend approval of S P twenty twenty-four, zero 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 twenty-five, four hundred Rial Road West. Outdoor storage display and sales with the conditions as recommended in the staff report.
Go second.
Second.
Madam Clark, can we get the?
Mr. Moore?
Hi.
Mr. Clayburn?
Hi.
Mr. Carazana?
Hi.
Mr. Bivins?
Hi.
Mr. Murray?
Hi.
Thank you.
Right. Well, thank you for the applicant. Uh, nice presentation. All right, we're back to committee reports. Committee reports. Commissioner Murray, do you have any committee reports?
Nope.
Must have been a quiet couple of weeks.
You know, I think lots of people are preparing for the, these, these budget, these budget meetings. You know, I think lots of people are preparing for the, these, these budget, these budget meetings, so that might be, so I would encourage people, if you haven't been, if you haven't heard a budget meeting, go hear a budget meeting, because I think that'll answer a number of the questions we have about CIPs and things like that. I think you'll find that informative.
Yes, correct. The, um, the Croze CAC will be replaced by a budget meeting.
Where is this coming?
Where's that?
Oh, he's a. I didn't see him.
The gentleman there behind the seat, the guy behind the seals.
That's great. All right. Moving on. Barnes?
Thank you, sir.
Review from the Board of Visitors meetings.
Board Supervisor. A long day.
It's, you know, my day job sometimes bleeds over too.
It's like, we're all, Andy and I concur. But it's not a POV meeting.
Uh, two items, uh, the board considered, um, at the April second meeting that you all had reviewed. The first one was, you recall, we had two tranches of AFDs that had come through. The second one went through, um, most of the issues that we were sort of wrestling with the first one and was resolved. With the first tranche of AFD, so this one went through very quickly, uh, at the board, uh, and they approved the recommendation to staff, where you're taking some of the parcels out that were, if you recall, had zero lot potential. The other thing that they considered was data centers. Again, you'll recall, we did that sort of a phase one, um, interim, uh, set of regulations to ETA will allow for, uh, some regulations of zoning, uh, I mean of data centers and staff's already working on a, a more in-depth, nuanced, uh, zoning text amendment that will probably be bringing to you all in the next year or so, within the next year. But those are the two major items that they considered. They're both were approved by the board.
Great. New business? Own new business, right?
Old business.
Is there old business?
Well, I would like to, if there is, but I'd like for, for a gentleman to stay in the, and stay in the, in the room before I say something. But everyone knows how I've been just absolutely annoyed and fed up by the Rio Route twenty nine overpass plantings. Over the years, I have referred to them as zombie plants. I need to compliment everyone involved. It is lovely at the moment. They have fresh plantings and they're well kept and it is a welcome sight to see something that nice at that location when it was that scary at that location for many years. So if anyone in the room is responsible for that happening, I would just say thank you so very much.
I'd like to, thank you for attempting to give Kevin a shout out there. But I mean, we really need to thank our, our Facilities Environmental Services, Fed's Department for maintaining those.
Well, if you would please extend that, because the, the look there is completely, it's more welcoming and with Home Depot coming across the street, I think that's a, that's a good way to present us. And if you haven't seen the Home Depot construction, gentlemen and gentle ladies, I would suggest you go see it.
It looks like a Home Depot.
It looks like a Home Depot. It looks like a Home Depot.
Needs some orange paint for there, yeah. It's got, it's got a, it's an orange.
Commissioner Murray?
Commissioner Murray?
Yeah, um, I received a, a report, you guys might remember the Montclair rezoning to allow that, where there was a stream involved of much controversy. Well, we got a report that the, um, that the developer has applied for an Army Corps of Engineer permit to remove the stream, which raises all kinds of questions, um, that I'm still trying to get answers to, and I think Supervisor Malik is trying to get answers to. Um, because I assume this would invalidate this, this site plan, um, if they remove that stream, because I are, as are usually one of our conditions is that in, in general accordance with the site plan, if the stream's not there, that seems like it's no longer in accordance. But then also what kind of mitigation requirements would be required for the, the buffer that's not going to be there? And, and so forth. So I don't know if there's any details that staff has at this time. Um, is, is this going to end up coming back to us, um, now that there has been this large change?
Uh, so my, my knowledge about this is limited to what I receive by email, which is that there's been approval of, uh, of, of the permit that is handled by somebody other than the county. Um, I, I can't address the site development plan. Obviously, the site development plan is something that's administratively addressed rather than something that comes before the planning commission. That, it, for better or for worse, is the extent of my knowledge. Yeah, they're going through a site plan review now and it was the permitting agencies was, uh, Department of Biological Quality and the, uh, US Army Corps of Engineers.
So one of the conditions that when we, when we approve rezoning like this is, you know, and I I would have to look at the general text of that. Doesn't it say something about general accordance with the, the site plan? It's one of the general.
Well, it would be, it would have been the application plan, um, as opposed to the site plan, which, you know, is the administrative.
I'm sorry, you're right.
Yeah, small point. I, 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 I take what you're trying to say. You know, it's in process right now and to get you the exact answers that you're looking for, I am hesitant to give them to you now. I, I know enough to generally what's going on, but not the specifics, I think, which you're gonna, which you probably are looking for.
Okay. Just I know this is a, a very heated issue in Croze and has been for quite a while, so I know that the public is, is very eager to find out what's going on there.
I'm sure Supervisor Malik will not be slow on trying to find answers on that.
And, and I would just say, um, I know that members of our current development team as well as the zoning team have been discussing this. I'm, uh, I'm actually tracking the, the minutia, the detail on this one.
All right. Well, I think with that, uh, we are, so we're adjourned the planning commission until April twenty second at six PM.
Thank you.